Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the March 20th, 2025 Board of Commissioners meeting. The call is meeting to order and we'll start with the panel meeting. Commissioner Godu?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, today is the first day of spring, so happy spring, everybody. We have a full house both in 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 Dunland as well as in person. In person, we have all three commissioners. We have Louie White, Chantel Gethen, Pat Nicholson, June Gates, and Leila Ntila. And in Dunland, looks like we have Allison Kibakowski. I see Erin Coker and a number of guests, including without limited to David Distallo, Gretchen, my eyes are not great, Cass, guests. We have Jordan Little, Superintendent Henry, Katie Casey. Is there anyone I haven't announced that would like to? Good morning. Thank you for having us.
Steven, excuse me, Steven Brewstein with Glendale Dining Services.
Good morning, Steven.
Morning.
Good morning. I'm Vera Kelsey Watts. I'm a Rockham County resident and business owner.
Good morning. Thank you for joining us today.
All right. I think that completes the attendance and we'll move on to opening. So we have an, for the first is facilities, job cleaning.
I'll make a motion to authorize the senior director of facilities planning and IT to review, evaluate the proposal, return with the recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion on that opening? Hearing none, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Morello? And I vote yes. Next, we have an opening for document management systems.
Make a motion to authorize the senior director of human resources to review, evaluate the proposals and return with a recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion? On the motion, Commissioner Tom Morello?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next, we have an award for fuel.
First motion I'll make is for, I'll make a motion to award the proposal for fuel, ULC number two LP diesel and gasoline to multiple vendors as follows. For the number two ultra-low sulfur large drops of spray for a fixed cost of $2.57, 2.5712 a gallon for diesel fuel for spray for a fixed cost of $2.967 a gallon. For number two ultra-low sulfur, sulfur, small drops in the, to the Hafner's Energy Group for $2.798 a gallon. For LP gas for Hafner's Energy Group for $1.598 a gallon. The contract for gasoline to East River Energy for.
They've given us a quote of 2.4574, but they've called it subject to change.
For a holdout?
So I'd like to recommend that we go with that, but reserve the right to revisit the award.
So I won't make that.
No, we're just writing, okay, so you're right, to subject to.
Subject to change.
Change and revisit.
2.4574.
And so the contract for gasoline, East River Energy for $2.2574 cents a gallon is recommended by the director, subject to change.
And revisiting.
Thank you.
Don't make me do that again.
Are you done?
You did an excellent job, so thank you for that. Any discussion on that? Hearing none? I do know, we spoke to you this morning a little bit about that. Some of these numbers are coming in, especially with respect to the gasoline. That's actually lower than it was last year. Though there is some subject to change and it sounds like with respect to that, we will have an opportunity revisit and also we get six deliveries for you.
Roughly.
About, so and we'll get advanced notice.
Right.
Specifically regarding the gasoline price. Potentially gasoline prices are going to drop and we don't want to be locked into a, a high price if we don't have to be. Is that, will this, are we contractually obligated to accept their price of, you know, prices go down 20% and?
I think we will, this is the price we're, we're locked into, which is still lower than last year. I mean, the number, given the number of deliveries we get. I mean.
What period of time is this for?
One year.
One year, okay. I think we can live with it for one year.
Okay, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Morello? And I vote yes. And next, we have the award for the jail chiller replacement.
Make a motion to award the proposal for jail chiller replacement for K, 2K PMB Enterprises LLC for an amount not to exceed $177,660 is recommended by the senior director of facilities planning and IT.
Second.
Discussion? I have just a little bit of discussion. So it seems like the, we have 190,000 budgets, but the, and we only got this one bid who we've worked with and we have a great relationship, but we had to scale back a little bit. Can you talk a little bit about what we scaled back and if it's going to impact overall?
We had hoped where we were replacing the chiller to replace the pumps, to add some drives, to redo some piping, to install a dust collector, if you will. And none of that really fit in the scope, but I think it's important, all the same, the chiller has been there since 1986. The new chiller will be dramatically more efficient, even if we're not able to do the remainder of the upgrades.
Okay. So is it going to be difficult to do those upgrades? Like, is it easier, I assume it's easier to do the upgrades in one?
It would be easy, but I think there's still potential that we could do it in the future, yes.
Okay, great. It would, it just seems like if we're tearing the thing apart, we might as well do all the piping.
That was kind of our thought too when we put it out to RFP.
So may, maybe with timing, we can, when we do this, okay. Thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, on the motion, Commissioner Tom Morello?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next, we have the award for food services for long-term care and assisted living, the jail and category.
I'll make a motion to award the proposal for food services, long-term care, assisted living jail FA to Sedecco for the amount of $4,562,926 total cost, with 57% of the expenses and labor as recommended by the Food Services Committee.
Second.
Discussion?
We reviewed all the proposals and carefully met with each of the, the groups and this is the lowest bid and seems to be the largest provider with the best reputation. And I think the committee is pretty unanimous in that this is going to be best for the county. Then I think it's unfortunate that we're not keeping our current vendor, but that's the way these things go. It's why we put things out to bid. And looking forward to Sedecco coming in and taking care of our needs.
I would say the same thing. I mean, they, they did a great job, the four of them. I think there's four years I've met multiple, multiple times. Chantel with the leadership and Jason and Chuck and Kendra all did a good job. They came back with what they think is the best one. Obviously, this is what we do. We have them look at it and they bring it to us to award it. So and I do, I want to thank Glendale. I was part of the team nine to 10 years ago that actually, when we changed from our own people making the food here to privatizing it to Glendale. So I had a, a good relationship with Jim Payton, the owner, and I hope we continue that. I want to thank them also for the great job they've done. I spearheaded, although Jim did mention that it was him and a former nursing home administrator, I think I was the spearhead of, you know, I took a ride to Lynn, Massachusetts and took my life from my hands. I went down there and watched them making it. So I think Meals on Wheels is, you know, of all the years I've been here, there's a few feathers on my cap, Meals on Wheels is one that I'm really proud of. So I thank them for doing that and, and hopefully in five years, they come back and, and they rebid it and will do it again, but I, I welcome Sedecco and I look forward to the transition.
Thanks, Tom. First, I'd just like to say one, thank you to the team here at Rockham County and the effort to thoroughly analyze all of it. It was a truly a collaborative effort by the team that was, by the committee. And one thing that struck me so considerably is that throughout the process, you know, everybody was looking out for everyone, other departments in person. And that is such a like wonderful thing and it's how we got to such a, you know, great end result in terms of making sure that going with a vendor that is going to be best at this point, what we fear is best through service to the county in total. So we appreciate that. Also, thank you to the vendors that submitted bids. One thing is that the bids were thorough, the presentations were outstanding. So Dexo, I thought, didn't have a, just a wonderful presentation, but all the vendors had great presentations and put, there's no doubt that everyone put a significant amount of effort into their bids and we appreciate the efforts and look forward to the future as well as the transition. And we appreciate Glendale, you know, to be making the transitions move too. With that, we will, any other discussion on the view? On the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Morello?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Moving on, we're going right to the consent agenda. And first, we have meeting minutes to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the February 20th, 2025 public meetings and the February, February 27th, 2025 public and non-public meetings.
Second.
Discussion on the minutes?
Yeah, all good to me.
They look great. Leila, you've been very busy. It's like, but we appreciate your efforts and, you know, we don't have many corrections ever because there is no need to have corrections, so thank you for your efforts. Okay, on the motion, Commissioner Tom Morello?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next, we have the March 20th AP list.
Make a motion to approve the February 20th, 2025, no, here we go, another one. Motion to approve the March 20th, 2025, the amount paid for the rest for the $1,425,059.
Second.
Discussion?
No, it's all good.
I just have a quick question. When I was looking, we're like 80% extended, is that on that? I was looking at.
Now, it's just the coverage, what I did for the line items. There are a lot, my general rules try to go with a warrants are 50,000 or lower or any chance contacted nursing.
Oh, I see what you.
So if that provides a fairly adequate coverage and then detailing those individual items are 50,000 or higher.
Okay, I understand. I, I misunderstood the looking at that, but thank you. That makes perfect sense now.
Yeah, there are lots of miscellaneous warrants this time, like 10, 15, 20,000 this time, yeah.
But we're much, I mean, we're a lot lower. I mean, we don't have a state bill on this. So it's part of the reason we're significantly lower than we are typically. Yeah, exactly. On the motion, I think we're Commissioner Tom Morello?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, and then we have another motion with respect to the preemptive payroll.
So I'll make a motion to approve the March 28th payroll expense amount not to exceed 1.6 million for the period ending March 22nd, 2025.
Second.
Discussion?
I think this, this is a lot of normal we're doing, this is a meeting next week.
Right.
And we look.
Right, so we're, we're, who, we're both, it happens to be that Commissioner Tom Morello and I are both away next week.
She won't be in a room.
The last time we were both away.
She like looks where I'm going now.
I called Mary Kay. But again, so what we're doing is, just so anyone in the public knows, we're approving payrolls so the payroll can carry on smoothly. When we look at recent payrolls, we're, we've always been below the 1.6, so we're protective, but then two weeks from now, we'll narrow it down to the exact amount. And thank you for doing this. Thank you for everyone's accommodations. All right, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commission Tom Morello? And I vote yes. Commissioners updates? Anybody have anything to share this week?
Let's see, let me see. I got a couple of things. I'd like to make everyone aware, first of all, I, I went yesterday. I was, I had an opportunity to go meet with the building oversight committee. And I want to compliment them for their hard work. They're really on top of the details and it's a committee of members of the delegation that are really looking at the details of the, the construction. And, and it's, it's nice that we have that second set of eyes or more than two sets of eyes from that committee. It's, it's a good group and we, it was a beautiful day. We took a stroll down to the solar farm. I think we should call it a farm. It's, it's huge. It, it's, it's almost overwhelming. And saw the big, huge. All the construction to repair what the Verizon damage is. There's a lot of earth moving over there, you know, for the trench to, to go and repair all that. So we got to get a little eyeball on it and it was, you know, it was nice to go out there. Another thing I'd like to bring up is that Stratford County is right now in the midst of a huge problem because they've been hacked. The only department over at Stratford that is, was not hacked was the Sheriff's Department. And the only department in Stratford County that uses Block Five is the Sheriff's Department. So reasons why we should be continuing with Block Five and, and maybe even enhancing, you know, because there are serious threats out, out there. They cannot process a, a real estate transaction in the entire county since, well, it went down on Saturday. So, so far, all this week, and that's an economic, a serious issue, you know, you.
Not just economic, it's like the, the, yeah, exactly. And the recording is so, the timing of recording deeds is so critical.
I think they were right that day and, you know, so residents, I'm sure, are having difficulty because, you know, I know when we bought a house, we were homeless for a week just because of the timing, you know, and staying with relatives. People who are in that circumstance, they're all of a sudden looking at hotels or, you know, relatives that will. What am I, it's a huge inconvenience. So we, I'm glad that we take it really seriously and we hired, who I think is one of the premier groups in, in doing the job and thank them for doing a great job.
Credit to Robin.
Absolutely.
Credit to Robin for making.
Has been on the forefront of cybersecurity. It doesn't, it doesn't insulate us entirely, but when you have someone like Robin at the forefront, like making, working so hard with cybersecurity, whether it's Block News and Block Five, whether it's all the, all the, like.
The educational pieces that have all the employees, yeah.
Right, because.
She does so much work.
There is so much education. We all do the online quizzes and things like that, but it's so, it is, it is instructive and educational and it really, it's like every little piece from a grassroots effort to a, you know, top-down approach she's covering, so I don't, do you want?
I just wanted to say that Robin has absolutely done yeoman's work. She's taken a lot of training herself. She comes back and she wants to make sure that everybody's aware of what's going on. She really pays attention and recognizes that it has a critical potential weakness for all of us.
This is, this is the third time, Joe. I think they might go Block Five pretty soon.
We, I think we have one year left on our contract with Block Five.
All right.
Yeah, well.
We'll scrutinize their agreement nevertheless, but obviously they're doing a good job.
Thank you very much.
Thank, yeah, thank you to your team and to Robin. I mean, I don't know, maybe she'll watch it.
I'll be happy to pass it on.
Please pass it on.
Thank you.
So great. Thank you for sharing that.
And one other item I'd like to bring up, there is a bill that Kathy Stacy made me aware of. She was unable to make today's meeting, so she asked me to bring this up. There was a non-German amendment to HB 456 with, which is regarding. Well, let me put it in layman's terms. There are some folks who are unhappy with the New Hampshire Municipal Association and the way that they lobby. And they lobby based on how they, you know, the majority rules. So if you've got a split vote, 60-40, they're going to go up and lobby for the 60%. And that alienates a lot of the municipal organizations. And so they've got a bill in there to stop the, them from that lobbying effort. But there's this amendment that was just put on, added in, any association would not be allowed to lobby. And that puts us at a significant disadvantage because we need the New Hampshire County, Association of Counties, to be lobbying on our behalf. And they behave in a completely different manner than the municipal association.
She'll get you a couple.
If there's a split vote with the county organization, they don't lobby. They are, they're going up and lobbying for us on the basis of when there's, you know, pretty much unanimous agreement on, on these bills. So anyway, we want to kill or change the amendment on HB 456 to our advantages. We just need to be aware, there's some folks in Concord that need some, and, and it came out of Stratford County, incidentally, and I don't know who, but maybe a couple of phone calls are worthy to explain our concerns in that regard. That concludes my safety update today.
I'm a little short.
I have to, I'll continue on the track of health bills, so go ahead.
Mine, just busy, busy. I'm in union negotiations and I did attend the meeting over there with you and the group at the job trailer for a new building and really, really good. And the building really coming along and the committee really, that they bring in is all that. You get us really know where that's going, so we had a good, good conversation with them and just, just busy.
You know, I will say one thing about just to tap, I just want to, with respect to the building, I ran into someone at the grocery store, a former state rep in Fort Smith, and she was commenting on, and I've looped on this comment a lot of times, how, how beautiful the building looks, how it feels like it just fits into the, you know, that it's just, it's really stately, but, you know, it's not overdone. It's just, and it fits in with the rest of the complex. And so that's really, it's just a nice thing that the public, you know, obviously, once they're in the building and utilizing the building, they're going to see all of the benefits of it. However, it's nice to see that it like fits in with the neighborhood, what we're trying to achieve. So when people stop you in the grocery store, that's always a thing, almost. I want to flag House Bill 592, which is bail reform. I think it's something we do need to address because, and right now, I think it passed the Senate and is now in the House, but it's going to significantly change how we're holding people. One, it eliminates magistrates and the bail, with respect to bail reform, it really heightens the standards to that you can hold people on preventative detention, meaning people are going to be held as a result of these changes to bail reform. What we're going to see is a, a definite uptick in the number of people being housed at the, at the jail. It changes the time for, it eliminates magistrates, so there's not going to be weekend hearings anymore. It changes from 24 to 36 hours for, to arraign someone and that doesn't include weekends. So what we can see is if someone gets picked up on like Thursday night, they may be held at the jail till Monday morning without seeing a judge or magistrate. So, and then it also expanded the, it expands the nature by which someone can be held on preventative detention, means held without bail. And those are even conditions of if there are risks of suicide or depression. And so expanding this, I mean, I think there's a side issue of exposure. A bail commissioner is saying someone is suicidal, like what we need to do from a, from a care and safety for while they're being held. And then there's the second piece of we're going to see if this passes, which I think there's a lot of support for it. And perhaps Superintendent Henry, he's here, he went and spoke, he could talk a little bit more about it, but we're going to see increased costs, increase population out of the jail as a result of passing this bill. Superintendent Henry, do you want to weigh in? Or Pat?
I, I can weigh in. I did testify on this bill this week that was interesting, just raising the concerns of, on the jails then, we know that's going to go up on bail, them coming in, and, and that is what it is. I did, myself and Brian King from Carroll, just raised our concern that, like you just talked about, if one of the check boxes, as the way it's written there, says acute depression or suicidal, be held for preventative detention, we were concerned that is a mental health issue. And then, you know, we were told by the Senator as well, it's totality of everything. But looking at it from a lens of a bail commissioner, if I'm there, which I'm not trained in mental health or anything that, and it's one of the checkboxes, first I'm concerned, are they going to ask the person, are they acutely depressed? And then how do you diagnose that? Or if a person says, well, I'm depressed and I'm a bail commissioner, well, they said depressed and I don't want to get in trouble, so I'm going to check off that box for preventative detention. So that is my, that is our concern on the jail end of it. And we testified that, at least to put on record, that we had concern in that one section.
Are, are, are you against the, the bill for it or just expressing concerns of the ramifications?
So we're just concerned of that section, the jail is, the superpowers take no stance on this because first of all, it's, we are just the ones that house them in our facility and, and that's our job. And we relay the message of we, to you guys and, and to legislators that it probably will cost more money. This is what it was pre-COVID, but that is our job. So we take no stance either way on this bail. You asked me on a personal level, some more accountability of people staying in is good. I've seen some things over the years, a healthy balance. But the only thing that we actually testified on was just our concern on those, that section.
Well, I think that there is some concern on that section with our exposure. It's like if, if we're holding someone, I mean, I think we're pretty okay, but I mean, certain, there is some level of exposure. If someone's coming in, is being held for five days based on this acute depression and it's being, that determination is being built, made by the bail commissioner. It, it feels a little, with no mental health training, it feels, it doesn't feel good. And I don't know what potentially our exposure as the county could be. Do you guys have one away now or?
Well, I mean, I, I think that preventative detention is a good thing in some cases, obviously. If someone is dangerous, I think that unfortunately, we do see a lot of mentally ill people who are suicidal, who are dangerous. And unfortunately, because the system does not, is kind of broken, they end up in the criminal justice system and then we don't have any, anything else to do with these folks except hold them on preventive detention because if, if they're released, we, we can ensure that the community will be safe and not at risk. But I, you know, I certainly understand the issue as well that, you know, the jail is not a place to house mentally ill people. I mean, that's not the purpose, but, you know, it's not an easy, it's not an easy answer.
It sounds like Kate's concern is around it being like focused on depression alone without more. Am I understanding that or that's the checkbox?
Yes, you can check the box on depression.
Yeah, if there's not more than that, I agree. That's a pretty tough sell.
Well, we're talking about that somebody will be detained for a period of 24 to 36 hours.
Or more.
That might not need to be detained. I mean, that's the downside, potentially because the, the bail bondsman or whoever is not going to be qualified to make a determination and we're certainly not qualified. That, that's a determination of depression or psychological problems.
Yeah, I mean, I get, that's a problem, I guess, for that, that timeframe. But I think once, unfortunately, they'll have to wait, have it for the weekend, depending on when it occurs. But whenever the arraignment does occur with a judge and a defense attorney and a prosecutor who can look at it and say, this doesn't look like someone who should be held preventatively. But again, that just depends on when the person is arrested. And when the person is arrested.
Yeah, yeah, and sometimes it's like, I I have concerns, it's just like, I think the jail does an amazing job prime care with, in terms of making sure. But there is disruption, the reality is, sometimes there is disruption in medication as a result of not getting the same medication or. I mean, I know the jail does its best job as possible to access the right same medication, but um, you know, you can see what. How it could. Some, in some instances, be more problematic and per give us a little exposure at the jail.
Uh, can I try, can I chime in again real quick? Um, the other thing is just that, um, because when, let's say that, and I agree with Pat, I mean, it's, you know, you have your. Horrible crimes that belong here for random detention and their suicidal stuff, we deal that all the time. My concern is like a lower level crime that rises up to say a, a, you know, class A misdemeanor and what things are gonna hold them on as well, you're depressed, I I just, the bail commissioners aren't. Trained in that area. But even even speaking to that, on a bail, if they put this person as suicidal or acutely depressed. It's gonna trigger over here on our medical end that we probably won't, we won't release them until we have a full evaluation on them. Even the courts say, because it's a liability for us just to watch, walk out the door knowing. That this was checked off on a box, so we have to clear them, or at the very least. Um, if we're not able to get, like the smaller jails, able to clear them, they're gonna do, what we've done in the past is you drive them down to the local hospital. And drop them off at the front door, which, you know, I've been in the newspaper for that too, just that we're dropping them off, but they're free citizens. So I I'm just concerned that it is used correctly, the bail commissioners are trained correctly and that is. Uh, uh, um, ju- just my concern. So it could trigger a lot of different things depending how it's done and we'll just have to uh see how it goes.
Okay, it's uh going for a full Senate vote today, so I guess we'll all stay tuned. It's mostly put on the radar for. All right. Well, does anybody have anything else for commissioners?
No.
Um, all right, moving on to the county attorney's office, there's a couple of motions on the, um, the only issue before and um. I think we might have to table them because because I think they need a bid waivers. Cause if we, if we don't, we either need to go out to bid or have bid waivers on them because they're oh, they're over ten thousand. And they're, I know their renewals.
Yeah.
Which is different than like an amendment. So um, I believe, I think that for good reasons, they're probably sole source and we use them, that they probably just need. Are you okay if we table them this week just to pro forma and then you can come back with bid waivers for next week?
Yeah, um, I don't, you know, with PBK, I don't know that it makes sense to, because. I mean, this is a platform that we've used for years and and all the other county attorney's offices are using it, so we, it's almost like we don't have. Much of a choice in terms of what platform we use. So in terms of a bid waiver.
It would just be a sole source vendor or that, or just that we, I mean, for good reason, I don't think that, I mean, I personally don't have any issue with it. I just think from a form perspective, we have to do the big waivers if we have one up in that. Does, does anybody, if you guys please weigh in.
It's the policy, so. I mean, we're gonna go with them, but just the policy.
So there's no meeting next week.
Oh, wow.
So it'll be two weeks.
Is that okay from a timing perspective?
I think it would be, yeah, yeah. It's more, we just want to get it done for the budget.
Yeah.
This is over ten thousand because it's three year.
For Westlaw and then Carpool Solutions is like twenty-seven thousand, I think, yeah.
Can we amend these uh motions right now to uh to list them as a bid waiver? As a bid waiver request?
Or you could do one year and you could do one year.
I mean, I think the time we just related to the budget, right?
Yeah, I I don't wanna do less than one year. I think it makes sense to do the, you know, the three.
I think it.
Okay, so we do it two weeks?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And I think it's okay from a budgeting perspective, if you want to put it, like, put that in with that budget, it's just a form of. Making sure we're doing it properly.
Yeah.
And I mean, good reasons for big waivers in both instances.
Nobody's opposed.
Yeah. That's fine.
They'll probably get their paperwork right.
So and with respect to that, can uh, could I get a motion to table uh the items A and B and?
I'll make a motion to uh table Thompson, Union's contract renewed and also. Carpool Solution's license renewed for two weeks.
On the motion, Commissioner Tom Rowell.
Yes.
Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Moving on, we have Department of Corrections, Prime Care Addendum to that Health Services Agreement.
I'll make a motion to approve Prime Care Medical Inc. Amendment to Health uh Services Agreement. The effective dates of July first, two thousand twenty-five to June thirty, two thousand twenty-six, with a five percent increase. The annual fee to base coming contract of two million, three hundred fifteen dollars eighty. Two million, three hundred fifteen thousand eighty-six dollars and twenty cents M A T fee for. Four hundred eighty-four thousand, four hundred eighty-five dollars and twenty-nine cents and additional mental health fee of. One hundred twenty thousand, seven hundred eight dollars and eighty-eight cents for a total of. Two million, six hundred twenty thousand, two hundred eighty dollars and thirty-seven cents of recognition with Superintendent of the Department of Corrections.
Second.
Discussion. So we.
I just, Superintendent, so that part of that was that we, when we did the agreement that they could get five percent, this was already at some stone, right?
No, five percent, no, it's not a stone, this is just a, this is just a, in a um, an addendum to their current contract, which has been. Every year, it's been typical five percent in their contract. This is just an extension of the last contract to get us through. Until we um, the next fiscal cycle, as we look at opening in the jail. Cause I'm gonna have to look at what we need for medical and those kinds of things and we may need to look to go to RFP, this gets us through this next year. That um, five percent too, I'm working with Chuck as well and Prime Care, there's an opportunity to even probably reduce. In our operating budgets to push them over to more of the opioid abatement money, so we're we're looking on that right now too.
Yeah, I, that was my question. So I I appreciate that in terms of the, the M A T fee is. Broken out a little bit so that we can try to use opioid abatement money to um, to pay off the, pay for the MAT programming. Um, and to Superintendent Henry's point, we're gonna be, you know, this will be going to bid next year. We just want to um have the con- continued coverage until we open up next door.
Yes, already we're doing that additional O P N, that's coming out of opioid abatement. And I believe that separation right now, they put in Jason Kirk, if I'm wrong. Emailing that from Captain was like a hundred eighty-seven, two hundred thousand dollars. Would be no longer in the general fund budget, be over in the opioid abatement fund.
Yeah, it is, yep, yep.
So there's some savings there in the operating line for contracted medical for the jail.
And and hope, and hopefully more once Prime Care gets back to us with some more breakdown costs of services directly related to M A T. Um, which they are working on, then I can work with Chuck and there might be some opportunity more to to bring that over to the opioid abatement fund.
That would be great. All right, well, Prime Care's been doing a good job for us and. On the, any other discussion? Okay, on the motion, Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Rowell.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next, we have uh Finance Office Fiscal Year twenty twenty-six Community Project Funding Request.
I'll make a motion to authorize the Finance Office and the Sheriff's Office to apply for fiscal year. Two thousand forty-six and early project funding. Uh, allocated to Rock and Nell County for a mountain of exceed three millions, three hundred sixteen thousand, eight hundred fifty-four dollars and sixty cents.
Second.
Discussion.
So this is a little different than the the congressional discretionary spending projects.
Okay.
This is specifically that community, um, uh, you know, um, the community projects. And so actually, um, Representative Platts's office had reached out. And so this would be for the creation really of a large emergency response and security network. That's why the price tag is so high.
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, includes like a, you know, a hundred foot antenna and tower and many other things. So this is basically to cover Durham in the thirteen mile, uh, you know, seacoast. All along and also expanding beyond that and also tie into the state as well. Um, if Aaron or anyone from the Sheriff's Office wants to jump into on the the project, I know it's Captain Walsh who is, who's got more information on on it.
Anyone wanna speak up from the Sheriff's Department?
Um, let me just go grab my note really quick, sorry.
It seems like it, it, as I understood it, infrastructure with respect to towers and um, and um.
Yeah, focus on on spotting to emergencies that occur within, you know, the seacoast area. Um, that we currently don't have such a network um set up like this, that's why the getting the price tag is.
Um, and maybe you can speak to how much um, is this uh fully funded?
Uh, this, this one, yeah, this one would be fully funded. I don't know if it would. If the turnaround time is kind of what the C D S progressively directed spending. Uh, those things take about eighteen months before they convert into becoming grants.
Okay.
Um, this, I think eventually might come down to be converted to like uh the COPS grant, which is what happened before with a. Seven hundred fifty thousand dollars to become a tie-in or to tie in our dispatch, have the state be our backup.
Okay.
Um, so it might be the same process by which it takes a bit for it to go through um and get approved. Um, and then turned around to becoming a a grant, especially nowadays, I'm not sure.
Well, I mean, obviously, we, there's, I think, concerns right now in terms of like federal grants going away, so um, we need to be cognizant of that in our approach. This doesn't seem like, I mean, we don't need to order the equipment until we know we have a grant, so it's not a lot of exposure, since it's fully funded.
It's, it's not eighty-twenty, I mean, yes, that's grants, they they can be eighty percent. Um, grant funded and then twenty percent county matched, this is not one of those ones, this would be a full.
Well, that's why I was asking if it's fully funded, because if the money goes away, we don't wanna have all this money. In setting in contingent grant or, you know, and it's like we're tying up this money that is.
Motorola won't get all that money. That's the list of items for Motorola, like, wow. Yes.
Aaron, I see you back. Do you wanna share anything about the grant? For the.
Um, it's just basically uh. It ties in the thirteen miles of the seacoast um waterfront radio coverage for more. Larger scale incidences like what happened in Baltimore, Maryland, they weren't prepared for that kind of thing. And we still on the seacoast are struggling with communication, you know, having good communications. So this would help tie in all of the communities on the seacoast. Um, with better communications for large and small scale incidences with, you know, the support of um. Adding some new, you know, some of the new uh towers and equipment that they need, so. That's kind of just a basic overview and Molly's been helping us with this as well, so.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Um, on the motion, Commissioner Tom Rowell.
Yes.
Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Moving on to human resources, we have some uh revised job descriptions and regrade. So we'll do the first one with long-term care services with revised job description and regrade. You wanna read both motions simultaneously and we can.
Motion number one, to approve the revised job description for the Director of Clinical Services position. Effective March twentieth is recommend, two thousand twenty-five is recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second.
Um, and I'm gonna just talk generally for a minute or about regrades. Obviously, when um. A former administrator was here, we, he made, uh, we had a reorganization and. I think even Commissioner Tom Rowell, though you weren't here, you were aware of some of these things happening.
It was here in spirit.
Yes, you were, except for the person. But I, and so again, you know, um, with uh the welcoming of uh Chantel, we are doing, there's some more, we, just some. Fine tuning and um organizing in a way that best works for our operations. Um, I have had an opportunity to speak to Chantel about it and um fully support it. I don't know, do, do you wanna weigh in?
Yeah, I just, um, thank you. I think what I've kind of been looking at and focusing is around efficiency, kind of. Forward movement, what we can do to continue to support the direct staff. And have an environment that we can continue to move out of the agency higher in our own. And continue to not just meet the current level of care that our residents got, but how we can continue to improve that. While also building efficiency and systems so that as we open other units, we're not having to look to add an abundance of divisions to continue that level. Of quality and we're really fortunate with some of these with um, the amount of knowledge we have with our um, two kind of. Point nurses, just named Director of Nursing and um Clinical Director of Clinical Services. And being able to kind of align so that we can continue to move forward as well, so.
Great.
Okay.
Any others?
Yeah, we've reviewed all of these um, changes, it's, it, like you said, it's administrative changes and um. We have no administrator and it needs to make things more efficient and I, all good.
Great. All right, uh, without further ado, Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Rowell, and I vote yes. Now we have that, motion two.
Motion to approve a regrade for the Director of Clinical Services position to hour twenty-four. Uh, effective March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five, the salary. To be uh granted at a rate above maximum for a grade twenty-four. With no change in the evaluation date as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion, Commissioner Tom Rowell?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Now we have a further revised job description repurpose entitled.
Motion to approve the revised job description repurpose entitled to the infection. Uh, preventionist clinical educator position to infection preventionist effectiveness.
You know.
You know, I mean, I'm getting really good at this.
You, you have to repeat this more and all these comments, you just started thinking.
Two thousand twenty-five is recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second.
Any discussion?
Tom's got the difficult job.
I'll have to say it one word.
I thought it was opening up stuff.
Nail in seconds.
I got it, I got that down.
Commissioner Godu on the motion.
Yes.
Commissioner uh Tom Rowell.
Yes.
And I vote yes. So now we have a revised job description and further one motion.
Motion to approve the repurpose of a nursing manager position to clinical educator with the. Pedal change revised job description and downgrade uh to an hour nineteen effective March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five. Is recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second.
Any discussion? Commissioner Tom Rowell.
Yes.
Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Moving forward, we have precision fitness equipment preventative maintenance.
Make a motion to authorize Allison Kivikowski, Senior Director of Human Resources to. Execute a three-year contract on behalf of the board of commissioners effective July first, November fourth. With precision fitness equipment, uh, P F E for prevention maintenance. On the staff fitness center equipment for a total of two hundred seven hundred dollars. With a range to repair services and additional hundred dollars an hour as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second.
All right, discussion. I think short money for three years to make sure, I know that uh the equipment stays up to date. I know a lot of people utilize the gym, it's really quite nice, there's been a big effort to make sure we have updated equipment, so let's make it, keep it running.
It's useless if it not run right, people just won't use it.
Right. Okay, on the motion, Commissioner Tom Rowell.
Yes.
Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next, we have a travel and training request.
I want to make a motion to approve a travel training request for the Human Resources avoid A D. For the S H R M, Ashram Talent Acquisition Specialty Presidential. Presidential online course scheduled for April seventh and eighth, two thousand twenty-five. At a total cost of two thousand one hundred and thirty dollars as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second.
Discussion.
I'm just curious where this is being held, I didn't, I, there was no travel.
Somewhere close.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's an online course through the Society for Human Resource Management.
One hundred dollars for an online course?
It's very, um, she's gonna get us credential from this and she'll have to keep that credential going. Um, so she'll have to attend other classes to keep that credential. It's very invasive, this class, there's a lot to it. So um, it's hard to come by credentialing from the Society for Human Resource Management. So we've looked at this over the last year. And this is something that she wants to commit to and I think it's a great uh resource for Autumn to have. Um, uh, cause she's so committed to the county.
Oh boy, I brought a quite money into getting two thousand bucks into credentialing rather than a hotel and an airport, right?
Yeah, no, I I I'm not disagreeing and I I was just curious to understand the details. Autumn's doing a fantastic job, she wants to, you know, in, in, you know, increase her knowledge and certification. Fantastic, we still have, you know, about a hundred employees we wanna attract, so.
Fantastic. We still have, you know, about a hundred employees we want to attract, so.
Yeah.
Keep it going, right?
All right, on the motion, Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
Commissioner Tombrell, and I vote yes. All right, prepared head updates. Welcome, Ted. Would you like to lead us on?
Sure, thank you. Good to see everybody in person. It's nice to be here, even though we have to wear the mask, um. We're plugging along, we're very busy as usual. Um, we've had a few jury trials that's been happening um in our court. I know there's one still ongoing. Um. We're preparing for grand jury next month and um other than that, we've made some new hires, which is exciting. Um, two folks that we we made offers to who accepted and uh one is a person who actually worked for us and left. When he got married, he moved out of state, um, and he's coming back. He was doing civil work, wasn't really happy doing that, so he's coming back to the office. He did a great job for us, so we're really excited to have him back. Uh, the second person is um an intern.
Um.
The second one is an intern, his name is Davis, uh, he had turned for us, I think, a couple of different times, right?
Yeah, we did somewhere in the fall.
Yeah, and he did a really good job for us. He did some um courtroom work and also some research and and things like that. We were really impressed with him. So we did offer him a job and he's gonna join us in August, I believe.
Uh, yeah, August eleventh.
Right, so that's exciting. Um, and after he takes the bar, right, right, hopefully he'll pass. But um other than that, it's kind of business as usual. He did offer to start earlier, but we talked to Drew and felt it was smarter to focus on the bar.
Right, right, right. Yes, yeah, yeah, it's, yeah.
It's not easy.
Exactly. Jason, do you have anything else you'd want to share? Julie?
I'll defer to Alison.
Okay. Well, wait, I'm gonna do, uh, we'll go through and run into the room. And then move on. Chantel?
Good morning. Our census of the nursing home is a hundred and thirty-one. Our census of assisted living is forty-seven. In regards to outbreak, uh, we have one resident who tested positive, who's positive for COVID and we have um one staff member. And we have two staff members with the flu. One of the departments has additional flu-like symptoms, so that is being monitored as well. Uh, general updates from there, the guidance change for nursing homes, that was changed when effectively at the end of April. My team's currently in a in-depth six-part session that finishes this week so that we can get um continued clarification. To assure we're compliant with that. We have our mock survey or pre-survey where our compliance team will be coming in next week. And it'll be a like test run, so to speak, of regular survey. We want them to find any opportunities for us to both improve and to assure from a regulatory standpoint. We have a very wide range currently, but next week, somewhere between Sunday to Saturday, the piano will be delivered. So as it gets closer, we will get the exact date and time, but we have a Sunday to Saturday and eight AM to nine PM window.
Did it?
Yep, that we're working through. So as it gets closer, we'll be able to to nail that down, hopefully.
Well, we should have a like a bench once the uh piano arrives. Don't you think we could have a?
Yeah, so excited to kind of have that. The residents are excited. Last week, uh, we hosted for with New Hampshire Healthcare. A who can for the recreation, like nourishment activities staff. It went really well. One of the things that we did with. The team did beautiful kind of stepping up. We actually had the virtual dementia be part of it. So individuals from somewhere other county homes, somewhere just other nursing homes. Went through it and kind of had the conversation and experience. It was very eye-opening. We've had a lot of those people that then went back. They are reaching out to us to see if it's something we offer. So we kind of had the idea, so we haven't had conversations about if there's a way to do something around that with um money raised going to the efforts fund.
I was just gonna say that.
Credit to Ken, so if he was thinking about that, we just haven't worked through any of the logistics to see if we can do it as a way for continued education. You know, to the communities, but then also use it as a way to fundraise for our residents. So um those conversations will be starting soon.
That's great.
We are hosting a networking event next week for one of the local seacoast chambers. Um, every month they have a different location and we are hosting um this one. And other than that, it's been budgeting, negotiations, um.
Budgeting.
Budgeting.
Well, thank you for your efforts. Um, I love that idea of trying to use the dementia virtual training to um to like fundraise or it's like. It's a double win.
Yeah, so when we brought it forward, within one day of the team going back, he had offered. Because we didn't have the allotted time, we were gonna have a couple people we couldn't get. Some of the staff there and friends with the administrator, so they're gonna come at different days so that it could work. But within less than twenty-four hours, we had administrators from some of those. Um, nursing homes reaching out to see how they can incorporate it in either their building or if there's a way. To do something along those lines if they can join, et cetera.
Great.
So when Ken brought that forward, we'd have to figure out the logistics, because there's a lot of manpower behind it, but. Uh, it really is a truly moving. Uh. I would say enjoyable, but it's not, but it's a, it's very eye-opening and even when you've been around dementia, any things who understand dementia. It's very different when you do it, so.
It's great.
More to come on that.
Right, go. You're not busy, are you?
It's a regular one. Is the budget ready for us yet?
Time to eat lunch, let alone between uh negotiations and budgets.
All working lunches. Um, um, I did not announce last week, but Bill Roy did join us as our new accounting analyst, so. Welcome to Bill and he got, you know, right away. Um, put into helping out with doing payroll projections and and other things towards getting ready for departmental budgets. Um, and payroll projections uh will be going out um before the end of the day on the March twenty-fourth. So the division directors and the elected officials that head up uh departments will, and the office missers. Will get a look at those to be able to review and see if there's uh, if they think there's any holes or. You know, they believe like maybe the block for overtime money is maybe should be a little bit more or what have you, so. Um, it's even that's a little bit of a collaborative effort too, as far as making sure. We've also encompassed um any uh positions that might have been requested for a regrade or additional positions as far as that's on through HR. Um, for those who be on the uh payroll projections as well. Um, so again, just overall busy with budget, no surprise there. Grants, it's always busy with grants and April. Is around the corner and that's a extremely busy month for grants, uh grant reporting. Um, this past Monday, there was a uh work session on House Bill five forty-seven. With um House Finance Division Three, so that's the HHS, the biggest department in the state. And um so that House Bill five forty-seven is the twenty-two and a half million dollar bill. Um, for the counties to mostly be made whole for um them paying for claims that were covered by the increase in the. Federal medical assistance percentage, so there's a twelve point four percent crossover that both the feds and the state, I'm feds and counties. Paid for the same claims. Um, so the discussion or the vote by the committee was to retain that bill. In in committee and so what they're going to do is that um they're amenable to maybe not over the. This binding budget, but over four years to divide out that twenty-two and a half million dollars. So yes, we have to wait four years to be mostly made whole. I'd rather have that option versus getting no.
Right.
Funds back. Um, and then having a look at next steps that like need to be taken. So I think it's still good news for all the counties. Um, and obviously there is, we have Rockland County, lucky that we have as the committee chair, Jess Edwards for Finance Division Three. And uh and also sitting on that committee as well are some other representatives from Rockland County, so we have pretty good representation. Uh, Ken Wiley's on that committee, you know, overall for finance, so um I think, you know, I look towards working with them. And David Ross, the long-term care administrator from Hillsborough County was there and and so we have only viewed that game testimony at that work session and it went very well.
Great.
Um, so again, important thing for all.
What is that? What do you, what do you think Rockingham County share is gonna end up being?
I think what what's gonna happen is um that we should be able to, our amount of that twenty-two point five was about three million, only one three million. So if you divide that over four years, that's seven fifty thousand plus. Even with a two percent increase in the cap, in the overall gross cap, which is gonna happen by law.
Right.
If they can keep it at two.
That's.
Right.
Well, that's what the plan is now. Um, so that would mean about another three, three fifty. Uh, say three fifty increase. So we're still already out of the gates. We should have a net positive.
Right.
About four hundred thousand as far as budget-wise from what it could have been.
Well, still, if we can, yeah, a- address the cap and still be up.
Yes.
Take the win.
Yes.
And split this game age.
Yeah, so so what happened is we would actually see a net decrease in the overall categorical assistance area.
Yeah.
So that's, so that's good news there.
Yeah.
You know, leading to this budget, so. Um, let's see, obviously, uh continuing to monitor for any federal and state um changes. Uh, especially how it impacts grants, but you know, again, the big concern out there is about what is. Is something gonna change on the federal medical assistance percentage? Is that fifty percent of that amount going to change? Cause that will have a direct impact to all the counties. Um, and the state too, actually you have to worry about their own non-federal share of Medicaid liabilities. Uh, the audit services RFP went out a little bit and bids are due back for end of this month, month, March thirty-first, so that first meeting April, I. I uh look forward to having a an award for audit services firm for fiscal years uh twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven. Um, new negotiations, very busy with that, so four different unions going on right now for negotiations.
Thanks, here.
I'm in that quiet.
Oh, and there's other, um. And I was related to departments, reminder, your department budgets are due at the last Friday of the month, March twenty-eighth.
Thank you.
If I have any questions or maybe you're looking down your list of of uh operating expenses, you're like, oh, we don't have employee retention line. Maybe we should have that, so if spending things on our office line, reach out. Uh, to myself or Ben about any uh newly requested lines. And we'll get back to you. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Jude?
Good morning. Chuck's a tough rack to follow. All well, all well, we're very busy, budget, 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 having a half of the time getting quotes on some things. I think, you know, we're not the only ones that are busy or people are just really shorthanded everywhere, but we're we're plugging away at it. And um we did have a nice visit with the building oversight subcommittee this week. I was, I was happy to see Commissioner Godu in attendance. Um, they really are very attentive. They ask a lot of questions. They get the minutes every week, just like you do. And they all come in with like their notes and what does this mean and how is this followed up? They're really very engaged. It's nice.
Great.
And we did have a good walk down to the the solar array. That was sort of what they had targeted for this week, cause it's all in. So they wanted to have a look at it. That was ever source out there last week. Um. They're still sort of toying with who's responsible for doing that damage out there, but we're working on it. So we we made our our stance very clear.
Okay.
So we'll see where they come back. Um, Harvey's collecting invoices for us and I'm gonna send you all this one package. The system is up and running. They're still running conduit, et cetera, getting it back up online, but we're running, we're running now.
We're running.
Auto, yes.
Well, I mean, that's remarkable.
Yeah, it was really quite, it was potentially catastrophic, yet went, it went really well. We were gonna have to figure out somebody to fill the bar top. So it went well. Um, our guy Dan Carlisle really jumped through some hoops down there to get things running manually. He did a terrific job too, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm grateful.
And it was like that Harvey hat, like they're just like.
Right, right on spot, yeah.
Pitching in.
Um, Tuesday, I think it was, you know, maybe it was Wednesday morning this week, um. Commissioner, excuse me, Superintendent Henry brought through a a little delegation from Hillsborough County. They're looking at um future development in Hillsborough as far as potentially building a new jail or um. Whatever model they're following, they really wanted to have a good look at our community corrections. Kevin Warwick, who was a consultant and and is actually our regional consultant.
Yeah.
Was really um instrumental in the design of this. I think he feels really strongly that this is like the model and the best. So he was very pleased to show them, this is this and this is why we did it that way and this is what we learned in this jail and so on and so forth. I think they were, I'm sure. Jason, I'll speak to it, but I think they were very well impressed with the way things are coming along.
It's great to be another example of being sort of on that forefront of that, the. Community corrections, the model behind it and like they sort of the. We're working towards the program itself is about like, is sort of um. Adjusted way of thinking, right?
Yeah.
Cognitive behavioral uh changes and so if we can have the facility that supports that, really how we're gonna see the most success.
It's been a huge learning experience for me, actually. I think it's been really interesting. After watching boys who's worked in the jail for decades.
Yeah.
It's.
What a change.
Very, very interesting, yeah.
We're seeing a cross corrections entirely with community, community policing models and all sorts of things and mental health and this is like. Just is really on the forefront of tying into.
Right, Kevin speaks eloquently about that. Jason's been really patient with me and educating me, so it's kind of lovely.
Other than that, all's well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, do, do you have something? Oh, no, I'm running. I just didn't know if anybody, yeah, we're still going. Allison?
Hi, good morning. Um, I have just been busy working on job uh descriptions. And reviews of those in preparation for budget and also department head needs and changes, very busy in negotiations. Um, we are working um through, or the, we'll be hosting a department-specific training next week over at the county attorneys. Um, Primex, um, we sent out a notification um just to let everybody know that the point person for that will be Eileen. Um, and myself is secondary, um, so we are appreciative if everyone forwards their normal information. That would have gone to Leila over to our side of the house now, so we can get on it as quickly as possible. Uh, automated two job fairs yesterday, back to back, so um I'm anxious to see how she made out today when I get back to the office. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Erin, do you wanna speak on behalf of the Sheriff's Department today?
Sure, no major updates here. I know that um everyone's keeping extremely busy echoing on budget and negotiations and. Of course, it always seems with warmer weather, the deputies um tend to get a little busier too, so everybody likes to get out and about.
Thank you. Jason Emery. Last, but certainly not least.
Morning, everybody. Sorry, I'm on the phone, like my technology on a computer here since the Windows eleven update is having some issues, so I'll try to get on that. Um, yes, we had a tour yesterday. They were um consultants basically for Hillsborough County. They're doing a study over there. Um, of staffing patterns, the how the jail operations, all that kind of stuff in anticipation of that they're probably gonna build a a new jail. Um, and they want to attach community corrections to it, so they liked our community corrections, because we built it very um minimalist. For, you know, try to run with the least amount of staffing as possible. Uh, but flexibility enough, if something happened and we had to play a little bit of Tetris, that we could have um put other people in there. With, you know, the proper security locks and those things already in place, so uh they were very impressed with that and the, you know, Jude's team and over here and. Morning's G R B L, how it's designed, uh with pass-throughs and all kinds of good stuff, so they were very impressed. Um, that there, there's a team that wants to come up and I'll talk to, what's that?
No, I think that's true, that, you know, we do it and the other nine try to follow us. The other nine counties.
That's true. Uh, they want to send another group up just of correctional officers that kind of like we use for our team here to take a look at that and I'll. Talk to Jude about that for future. Um, currently in-house, we have one thirty-seven. Um, lot of things going on here, obviously, budget negotiations uh are going. Uh, we've been working on Relias, which is online learning, um with Robin and our staff here, that's coming on board, it's really moving along. Uh, also our guard tour system, which is the one we put in to do um electronic rounds. That can, instead of paper logs, you can type things into it, talk into it and electronically hold everything, so we can match up when you've done your rounds and stuff. Is up and running. We're running parallel systems on paper and that to just to make sure to get the kinks out, because we did run to one issue with. Some connectivity, uh, uh, Robin and Comcast have fixed. And once we a hundred percent with that, we'll be moving away from a lot of our paper. Um, and it's actually a lot better and um for us, we can also do reports of how rounds are going, if they're on time. Or that not, um, so it's just, um, staff is very, very happy with it. Because they'll make their life easier, but at the same time, we administration like it, because we're getting better data out of it and holding more accountability. Really, I think that's all I have.
Thank you.
Free luck.
I hope nothing, thank you. Just a reminder, there is no leaving after.
If you tune in at eight thirty on Thursday.
Allison and I, Matt, we're getting new building with positions, we need to have the, so. It's been a little talkable, wasn't it? We're gonna need to put somebody in there lobbying. It's kind of a fifty-fifty, I guess, some people say no, some people say yeah. But I think we should really get the group, the path, have, uh, to find out if we're gonna do something. I brought up yesterday for meeting, that is on the list, like, we're gonna have electrician, we're gonna have a plumber, we're gonna have three C guys. You know, that seems to be the one that we gotta question, you know, we might do that conversation about it. And I'm not sure, there is gonna be a phone in there, a little desk area, but I'm not sure if they walk in there and just, I'm worried about security. You know, if we watch him leave his backpack there and just leave, we're gonna have a big problem. Uh, I'm worried, I think we talked possibly, I talked to Alec yesterday about maybe the person being able to assist the lady or whatever things. They're not gonna just sit there and wait for somebody to walk in and give them something else to do. Or Pat, you wanna come see the county attorney? Or if there's something personal passing, like a victim, you guys, you gotta walk stairs and you know, call Pat and tell Pat for somebody down here. You know, I, I can't, I'm mixed with it. I'm mixed with it. I had a couple flipping underneath the safe position, the safe energy. I don't, the people that are in that building, who, who needs somebody in that lobby? I don't know, Pat, you know, we need.
You know, I think security, part of it, like, with people that come in, it would be nice. I mean, I think that would be very professional, um, to have someone down there, but, um, I'm just wondering, like, how we could do that.
But how, yeah, do you think we're available? And since, I don't know, we're down.
And then I'm also concerned a little bit, just in terms of security, if you have to go over again, like, how people are getting up to our office and can they get into our office? They can go up the elevator, right?
Card readers.
Card readers?
Yes.
Some folks can't get up the elevator unless they have a card reader.
I don't think they can get up the elevator unless.
They couldn't walk up too, I think.
Well, potentially, well, yes. Are you can get onto the floor from the stairwell always, yes. Yes.
I think it's something we gotta look at, you know, honestly, when I first came here, I remember up there with the old warning barrels for Robert, was when I walked by and there was an officer in the park, I looked in the officer's car, and I said, we gotta start walking. I'm worried about security, so when they come in there, although the sheriff is on the left-hand side or somebody just comes in there and decides to walk up to the auditorium and just get on there and sit there and have their lunch, I don't think we want that, really. I mean, I think we need somebody in that lobby. I don't wanna fill positions, but at the same time, I think we need somebody in that spot. There is a best of you, or whatever. You saw, I saw it on the plane yesterday. Uh, there is a place for somebody, either maybe they're waiting on the phone or the good directory that could call up the paths. But people probably aren't gonna go into the home, I mean, when everyone's there, there's enough space, you know, they're busy.
I mean, I would say we do have people come in, sometimes they're defendants, like, per se, or even represented, but they just, for some reason, they, they can come directly to our office and they come in a little bit hot sometimes and excited about whatever it is they're upset about. Um, so that's indeed an issue in terms of just someone walking in the building.
Sure.
Um, so, you know, I worry about that a little bit.
Good fodder for discussion for you.
Yeah.
We gotta plug in numbers about it, you know, positions are definitely being, being, need million dollars, but we have to put, you know, the professional staff in it, just to build up the line and keep it long-term. But I think there was somebody, I think they do, I think, you know, I don't know.
I think we should. And we go through, maybe if I had a little press, we should be able to do that, maybe have a special workshop. You know, when we're in person, we should be doing something. Are they gonna have access to cameras in this house? There's a million cameras in the building now. There's loads of cameras, there's lots of access control.
Okay.
There's something up the road, you know, the road.
Allison?
Yes?
Do you wanna speak?
No, I'll go into non-public when I, thank you.
I, I, I just like to, on the topic, I, I'd just like to comment that we have not, as a group, spoken about what extra personnel is gonna be needed for that building. And quite frankly, I'm not, what you're describing, I'm not sure is like an automatic, this is what we're doing. You know, not to mention that it's not gonna be up and running until September. And I'm hesitant to, to put in a lot of extra, uh, people until we kind of know what needs to be done. Now, that said, I think this deserves a full discussion at another time.
Yes, and I think the time is really going to be in conjunction with budget review.
Most support.
So I, I, I agree. I think all, these are all things that, I mean, part, so much of this, this budget is going to be sort of some of the, you know, new needs based on the bill, new building. So I think as part of, we'll break it down as part of that. I mean, I mean, everything from, okay, what about toilet paper? You know, who's supplying, what, who is taking the line for? It sounds absurd. I understand.
We are talking about it.
These are things that, you know, who is, because in this building, it's always been, as I understood it, under, um, long-term care's budget. But, you know, these are things that it seems so.
It's a lot on too.
What'd you say?
I said she can just pay for that much, too.
Exactly, so, um, does anybody else, this is, we've kind of morphed into new business, old business, but does anybody, um, have any other new business or business?
I know.
Okay. Um, so with that, we're moving on to public comment and I see a number of people from, uh, the public. Does anybody even speak who is in Zoom land? No? All right, uh, I don't, no one's, uh, spoken up, so with that, uh, that will conclude our public session and we'll, uh, I'll take a motion to move into non.
We want to move to non-public. We got a hint, ours being ninety-one dash A colon three, room two, A personnel. I believe that's all, and it is nine fifty-five.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? On the motion, Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
Commissioner Tomorello, and I vote yes. Thank you, everybody. Have a lovely rest of your day. First day of spring. Hello, we're, um, the time is now twelve oh eight. Um, we are coming out of non-public. We had four non-public sessions and I'm gonna turn it over to Commissioner Tomorello to make some motions.
I'll make a motion to seal the non-public minutes. Uh, we had four items, so make a motion to show the first and the third item. It definitely do the fact that it could affect adversity, the reputation of any person other than the member of this board. And when, and you got us the number two and number four, uh, make a motion to, uh, seal those till July first of two thousand twenty-five, because they could run their proposed action, uh, ineffective, ineffective.
Second.
On the, any discussion? Hearing none on the motion, Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
Commissioner Tomorello, and I vote yes. Now, I, we have one more motion to make. There was that dramatic pause. On the motion, um, have Commissioner Tomorello.
That will be true, yes.
Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
And I vote yes. We are adjourned. Have a good day, everyone.